Middle County Board of Commissioners meeting to order Tuesday, November 21st, 2023 at 10:00 a.m. Denise, will you call roll, please?
Commissioners Snyder?
Here.
Glazer?
Here.
Turwilliger?
Here.
Geisler?
Here.
Dorian? Smith?
Here.
Chairman Bone?
Here.
Six present, one excused.
Commissioner Twilliger, will you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, on Thanksgiving Day, we bow our heads to you and pray. We thank you for the many gifts you have provided for us. We pray for all those that are less fortunate. We pray for the health, for our bodies to continue to serve you. We pray for safe travels for all as we gather to worship you during this holiday season with hearts full of gratitude to you, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the minutes for November 7th, 2023. Yes?
I had a correction to make for the minutes. There was, um, for the motion to approve the bills and the financial, it says minutes in it, so go back and check that.
Okay.
The, um, the motion for the minutes is fine, but it kind of replicates for the bills, so.
Got it.
Okay.
Other than that, they were fine.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the following change. Do we have support?
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. We will approve the minutes and move on to the acceptance of the bills.
Properly addressed. General Bank Claims approved for the weeks of 10/16 through 10/20, 2023, in the amount Total general fund expenditures, $52,975.27. Properly addressed, General Bank Claims approved for the weeks of 10/23 through 10/27 in the amount of $330,993.58. Total general fund expenditures, $142,700.77. And General Bank Claims in the amount, or for the weeks of 10/30 to 11/3 in the amount of $449,519.91. Total general fund expenditures, $69,161.44.
Can I get a motion to approve the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
Do we have support? Thank you, Jim. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, we will move on to paying, we will approve paying the bills. We have no special program of the day, so at this point, um, I will ask, is there any public comment today? If there is, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good morning. Renita Bonnies, Homer Township. I've been attending the Board of Commissioner meetings, executive meetings, and subcommittee meetings for over two years now on a pretty regular basis. I began attending to see how our government and elected public servants work in this county. When I first attended, there was public comment at the beginning of the meetings for non-agenda items. Then, as each agenda item was proposed and discussed, there was an opportunity for public comments on that agenda item. When I attended the subcommittee meetings, there was a similar pattern of allowing public comments on the items being voted on. This has all now changed, especially at the start of 2023. We are now told that we're only allowed to make a public comment on the items that exist on the agenda, with the exception of this meeting, it wasn't stated. Um, there is no longer an opportunity to give public comment as each agenda item is motioned and discussed. If new business is proposed and added to the agenda, there is no longer a method to have a public comment on these added agenda items as the public does not know about them before the meeting. The subcommittees have also changed. We are now told that we are there to observe the meeting and that there is no public comment or interaction. This is really not true, I don't believe. According to the Open Meeting Act, these are public meetings and are to allow for public comments as votes are taking place and decisions are being made. So, this seems to be a direct violation of the Open Meeting Act. The Executive Board also has a quorum of the board members, uh, the commissioners present, so it should also fall under the Open Meeting Act and allow for public comment. When there were some big meetings a while back about the dams and the Four Lakes Task Force, the public was told at these meetings that the discussions took place at subcommittee meetings. That was where they were to voice their concerns and interact with the commissioners. So I ask you, where is the public voice heard and where are the issues put on public record? I realize even these public comments can fall outside of the new policy guidelines put in place this year. If all conversation goes on in private only, how will, how do we let the rest of the public know about our concerns? How will you know that the people, what the people that elected you and live in this county and community think and believe? Finally, I would like to know why the executive committee meetings are not livestreamed and recorded. It seems there are many unable to attend these daytime meetings, so the recordings are the only way they can go back and hear what is going on in the county. For instance, the sheriff gave a 20-minute presentation at the executive committee meeting December 13th of 2022, and it seems strange to put that much time into reviewing the sheriff's role and activities in the county to such a small number of people. Why wouldn't that have been recorded and made available? I believe all of the executive meetings should be livestreamed and the recordings made avail, available for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I apologize in advance for having this talk fast, but three minutes comes and goes quickly.
Yes.
My name is Bill Domena from, uh, uh, Homer Township. Good morning. I'm here to discuss two House bills that were passed relating to proposal two. In three minutes, I cannot fully convey the serious implications of these new laws on citizens. I encourage you to invite me to a working session along with Ms. Minary and Sheriff Green for us to discuss the issues and develop ways to prevent the criminalization of law-abiding citizens. Key issues in House Bill 4127 include criminalizing the following, with exceptions: possessing a firearm in a polling place or within 100 foot of any entrance to a building in which a polling place is located while polls are open on any election day; possessing a firearm on any day that early voting is conducted at an early voting site; or within 100 feet from any entrance to a building in which an early voting site is located; for 40 days before an election, possessing a firearm within 100 foot of any absentee ballot dropbox; for 40 days before an election, possessing a firearm when a voter can vote an absentee ballot in person in a clerk's main or satellite office; or within 100 feet of any entrance to a main or satellite office. Here are a few example cases that can cause a person to unintentionally violate the law. A concealed pistol license holder may carry a pistol concealed within these places or distances. However, it does not apply to any long gun in their vehicle or transported illegally on foot within the 100-foot distances prohibited above. So with or without a CPL, a citizen with a long gun in their vehicle for a lawful purpose, like going hunting, violates the law if they are within the prohibited 100-foot distance conditions above. Fortunately, there's an exemption for persons lawfully transporting up and possessing a firearm in a vehicle within 100 foot of an absentee ballot dropbox 40 days before an election. However, this only applies to proximity to the dropbox, not the prohibitions of within 100 foot of a building entrance. As of today, the dropbox outside the city building next door is within 100 feet of an entrance, so a citizen violates the law under several conditions. Even worse, if a dropbox is located on out on a public street, driving by would cause a citizen to violate the law under several conditions. You may say, how would a law enforcement officer know that I'm in possession of a firearm if I'm just minding my own business? Take the case where you are legally transporting a firearm in your car and you are later stopped for a traffic violation. The officer asks, where are you coming from? And you answer, from dropping off my absentee ballot or I went inside the city building to pay my water bill. He asks if you have any weapons in the car. You say, yes, I'm going hunting at a friend's farm. You may have just admitted violating the law. Sheriff Green, how will you instruct your department with regard to enforcement of these infringements on our Second Amendment rights? Anybody confused yet? Mr. Shulkey will continue with part two. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Larry Shulkey, Homer Township. So I'm going to read the following written by Bill Domena, uh, but this is something I am fully, uh, something I fully agree with. Let's look at the even more insidious companion bill, 4128. While absentee ballots are being processed, this bill prohibits all firearms in an absentee ballot counting place or within 100 feet of an absentee ballot counting place. Only uniformed duties, uh, only uniformed officers on duty, uh, are exempt. Now, there's some issues to consider with this. What does processed mean? Does just bringing in the mail, stamping the received ballot envelopes with a date of reception, or placing unopened envelopes into the bins for later action fall under the definition of being processed? Or does it only mean on specific days written into law, when the absentee ballot envelopes are opened, signature is verified, uh, and tallied? I couldn't find a definition, so it's dangerously subjective. In addition, are these ballots always processed at the same location and at the same time? How's a citizen expected to know all the intricacies of these laws in order to not become a criminal? At a minimum, we suggest that the commission come up with measures to mitigate unintentional violations of these new laws. For example, could require temporary or permanent highly visible signs identifying areas where anyone possessing a firearm may not enter. This includes the parking lot areas within 100 foot of any building, uh, entrance or ballot dropbox, polling places, locations where absentee ballots are processed or completed, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment today? Seeing no more public comment, we will go into Standing Committee Report Number One, please, Denise.
Dated November 17th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of fiscal year 2024 Section 5310 grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation. The term of this agreement is from October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2024. Under this agreement, Midland County Connection is eligible for $80,000 in funding designated for operating and mobility management expenses. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette M. Snyder, Chairperson, Steve Glazer for Jim Geisler, Gabe Turwilliger for Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder?
Mister Chair, the A&amp;O Committee recommends 89-11-23.
Thank you. Do we have any commissioner discussion? Um, yes.
This was the item I spoke on about the freedom. This is what it pertains to, so it's a grant to help that happen.
Yes, okay. I know the, I, we have county connection here. Would you like them to, you, if they, would you like them to go forward and touch base with that?
Thank you for coming, sure. Since you're already standing.
Yep, that'd be great.
I know that, in the other day, and there's a few, I've got some more, so. You want an extra one?
Um, sure.
I think I got everybody.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
This guy.
Thanks, Gary.
So what this program was meant to do is to give transportation to Midland County residents that had no transportation to get outside the county for medical. It's not emergency medical, but it, it's for seniors, um, anybody that's ADA, or for veterans. And so what it does is allows them to get rides if they're a Midland County resident to go anywhere pretty much in the state. And a lot of the places we go to is, uh, Ann Arbor is one of our biggest spots, we work for U of M and for the Veterans Hospital there. Brighton, Lansing, Grand Rapids, we've been to Canton, Royal Oak. Uh, we do a lot of local call for veterans to the Saginaw location and to the Clare location. So, a lot of those people just didn't have their rides, and that's what they, you know, started this program in 2020 through some grants, wrote with, it's federally funded, 50%. 50% through our budget. So, the vans were taken through a grant that was through, uh, the MPO had a grant available in 2020, and I put in for that, and it was awarded two vans for that. So, and that's pretty much, about 80-plus clients at this point.
Oh, yeah, so. Approximately 80 people?
Yep.
It's pretty amazing.
Approximately 80 people right now. It's been growing. Our mobility manager that we just started in, uh, June that oversees it, she does all the scheduling and, uh, sets up the rides. She does some of the transportation. I do some of the transportation when we don't have enough, uh, volunteers. Volunteers do get a little bit of compensation, 25 cents a mile, that we compensate them for their time, and then their meals if they're gone for more than four hours, they get a meal allowance as well. But it's all pretty much a volunteer basis. We have some of our own drivers that volunteer on their off time as well.
Very nice.
And we're always looking for volunteers.
Sounds like a good program.
Yep.
Sounds like a great program.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Oh, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, just a couple quick questions. Um, are the, you said that there's two vans used for it? Are they accessible for folks in wheelchair?
Both are accessible for wheelchair, yep.
Okay, awesome. Um, and then, I know you said medical transportation. Do they offer, also offer transportation to like mental health appointments?
Yep, anything outside the county. So if, if, just ask to go outside the county, because our regular service would have to do anything in county, whether it be dial-a-right or our service. And then, this is the meant to get people outside the county, because there was just wasn't no transportation outside the county unless they paid a, I mean, there's upwards of $600 fees that people are charged to get people to go to these locations, so this to get, they ride for nothing at this point.
Okay. And also, would there be, um, is it also transportation for Midland County residents? For example, if they were being discharged from the hospital in Ann Arbor, could they call and get transportation home?
It's, we usually don't have this situation, but if it was brought up, we try to on a one-on-one basis do that. It's just not always available. Could we, we say seven days in advance, but right now, we're already booking out in January and February. So it's, it's, yeah, there's a lot of bookings.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Gary. Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioners Geisler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Turwilliger?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Six ayes, one excused. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Two, please.
Dated November 17th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant agreement between the Midland County Central Dispatch Authority, MCCDA, and the Michigan Department of Technology, Management, and Budget. The term of this agreement is from the date of signature until project completion. This grant award is for up to $1 million to cover the cost of equipment that will support the integration of the county into Michigan's Public Safety Communication System, MPSCS, or to expand the interoperability of all local public safety entities within the county on the MPSCS. We recommend approval of the agreement and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make the necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette M. Snyder, Chairperson, Steve Glazer for James Geisler, Gabe Turwilliger for Eric Dorian, Admini, Administration and Operations Committee, Steve Glazer, Vice Chairperson, Jeanette M. Snyder for James Geisler, Gabe Turwilliger for Eric Dorian, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes, Mister Chair, the Administration Operations Committee recommends 90-11-23.
And Commissioner Glazer?
Yes, Mister Chairman, Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 90-11-23.
Do we have any commissioner discussion? Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Turwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Six ayes, one excused. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Three, please.
Dated November 17th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant agreement with the Midland Area Community Foundation in the amount of $5,000 to cover the cost of influenza vaccine for uninsured and underinsured adults. We recommend approval of the agreement and authorize the Administrator Controller to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette M. Snyder, Chairperson, Steve Glazer for James Geisler, Gabe Turwilliger for Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee, Steve Glazer, Vice Chairperson, Jeanette M. Snyder for James Geisler, Gabe Turwilliger for Eric Dorian, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes, Mister Chair, the Administration and Operations Committee recommends 91-11-23.
And Commissioner Glazer?
Yes, Mister Chairman, Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 91-11-23.
Do we have any commissioner discussion? Yes, Commissioner Smith?
I was just wondering if we know, um, how many people we expect that $5,000 to cover for underinsured or uninsured?
We did ask that in committee, but Fred, if you would go ahead and give the commissioners what you gave us.
Sure, good morning. Um, the grant's intended for any vaccine for a under, under or uninsured adult, but primarily the need is for influenza. Um, if it was influenza, it would be between 150 and 200 individuals, um, with vaccine, about $30 a dose. Um, the other need would be RSD vaccine, and that's a little bit more expensive. So, um, if fully utilized, we'd be looking at a few hundred individuals that would be vaccinated.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you. Any other discussion? Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Turwilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Six ayes, one absent, excused.
We have no RPCs today. We have no old business. We have no new business that I'm aware of, so we're going to move right to commissioner comments and start with Commissioner Smith again.
Um, I would just want to, um, say that I hope that everyone has a good Thanksgiving season, and we have a lot to be thankful for in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
I agree with that, that it's a short week, so, and I'm thankful that, um, for Thanksgiving in our, in the lovely county which we live. I liked the public comments and heard them, and, um, I guess I'm just going to refer to Bill and make sure that our processes are good, and, um, since I do serve on a lot of community committees, um, I think interaction would probably be a good thing that let them, but, you know, as per what, you know, we'll discuss it. Thank you.
Commissioner Glazer? Commissioner comments?
Yes.
Any comments?
And I'm speechless at this moment, although I would like to say, it's good to have you back, and it's good to have Bridget back, and, uh...
You're world travelers.
Yep, so, and look forward to...
It's good to be back.
A blessed Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Commissioner Twilliger?
Yes, sincerest, uh, hopes and wishes for a, uh, wonderful Thanksgiving for all of you. Um, and also, I bet you, you're probably getting ready to get out and get some hunting in. It's been a very long, probably many of you know that we, we do agribusiness at our farms, and, um, it's been a long fall, and nobody's even sighted their guns in yet, so, um, anyway, we're kind of, yes, yes. So hopefully, that will happen too. Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler?
No comment.
Um, I would say my comment would be, uh, only thing would be, hopefully, uh, we missed Commissioner Dorian today, but it sounds like he's, uh, doing, going merry freebed now, getting even better care, and it's good to know that he's there, and, uh, hope he continues his recovery, and, uh, and he is accepting visitors. So, I will move on now to commissioner meeting schedules. Start with Commissioner Smith.
All right, um, light on meetings this week, uh, uh, on, uh, in, on next, goodness, and next week, November 27th, um, at 2:00 p.m., I'll have the Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works, um, annual joint Board of Directors meeting in Saginaw. Um, and then, um, on November 30th at 5:00 p.m., I will have a Michigan Growth meeting at, uh, Delta College. Um, and on, uh, December 4th, I will have, uh, the Northern Michigan, uh, County Association Christmas Party, um, up in Roscommon, and I believe that takes us to our next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Snyder?
Um, and the 22nd, uh, the Road Commission will be meeting. Um, I'm going to start vacation early. I will not be attending. And the 28th, we have our committee meetings, uh, so I will announce A&amp;O at 2:30. Uh, City of Coleman is meeting, uh, that evening at 7:00. On the 30th, we had to remove our Employees Retirement Board. That will be at 10:00 a.m. here. And the Christmas party season has started on the 1st. Uh, Sanford is doing a new type of Christmas ball, um, that I'll be attending for Toys for Tots, and, um, that is it.
Thank you. Commissioner Twillier, or, excuse me, Commissioner Glazer?
Yes, sir. Uh, let's see, tomorrow, have, uh, negotiations with Road Patrol at 10 o'clock here in the boardroom. Um, Mid Michigan Community Action Agency meeting normally on thing, well, on Thursday, has been rescheduled, and I believe that's for the 7th of December. On the 27th, Monday, I have MAC Health and Human Services at 10 o'clock, and Judiciary Public Safety at 2 o'clock. Um, Community Mental Health on the 28th, Tuesday, uh, that will be in, at their headquarters in, uh, Mount Pleasant. Also have, uh, Human Services, or no, Finance Committee, I'm on now, at 1:30 on Tuesday, the 28th. And Midland County Parks and Recreation on December, I think the 6th, still. Uh, because it's Christmas, we move that around sometimes. And Lead Township will be on December the 11th at 7 o'clock, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
May I just, I'm sorry. I just want to add that Sanford Shines Parade, which is just a beautiful parade that happens at night, is before the Sanford Christmas Ball on the 1st.
Okay.
So I know some people like to attend that, so I just wanted to make mention. Thank you.
Commissioner Twilliger?
Yes, I have, um, just a couple things to make note of. November 30th, uh, announcing Human Service meeting, and November 28th, excuse me, Human Service meeting, and November 30th Recovery Court. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler?
Um, on the 27th, Monday, Michigan Works in Saginaw, and on Tuesday, the 28th, Finance Committee at 1:30, and A&amp;O at 2:30, and on Thursday, November 30th, Act 345. That's it.
Thank you. Um, and I have on the 29th, I have Great Lakes Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau, and then also on 30th, I have the Healthcare also, so, retiree healthcare, so those two things. The Great Lakes Bay is at, uh, Saginaw Chamber. So that's it, and right now, we need to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session for the purpose of labor negotiations.
Support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, we are in closed session. Thank you, everybody, for attending.